Evening and thank you for attending tonight's Board of Education meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district and hear from our community on important issues. We have reports to consider and business to conduct that are critical to the function of our school district. We ask that those in attendance tonight remain civil and be respectful as the board conducts its business. Calling out verbal aggressiveness, inappropriate language, and name-calling is not acceptable. If the meeting becomes unruly and we cannot conduct our business, the board may take a recess until such time that the audience is appropriate. If inappropriate behavior continues by individuals, they may be asked to leave the meeting. If necessary, the board reserves the right to excuse the audience and resume the meeting via livestream. We want everyone to have the ability to hear the business of the district and the comments of those who are here to speak. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting. If you'll join me in stating the pledge of allegiance. All right, if you'll join me in reciting the mission statement, "Learning Today Leading Tomorrow." First up are our recognitions.
It is my honor to recognize Dr. Kane, the Wentzville School District Superintendent today. The Missouri Association of School Administrators announced him as the 2022 Missouri Superintendent of the Year during the MSBA and MASA Annual Fall Conference on November 6th. Dr. Kane has served the Wentzville School District as the Wentzville School District Superintendent since 2013. During that time, the district has experienced unprecedented growth, adding more than 10,000 students per annual enrollment. Dr. Kane has led with purpose and passion, and we are honored to celebrate him tonight. Congratulations. We have a certificate for you, sir. I'd like to now turn it over to Bobby Christopher with Wright Construction, who will present an additional recognition this evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bobby Christopher. I was the project director for the North Point High School. And I'm here tonight to present an award from the AGC. We were one of the four finalists for projects over 50 million within the Mid-America class. We're honored to have this award. We're more excited, though, to hand it off to the district and to this community. So, this project was a flagship project for myself, for our company, one that we're very proud of. You know, working with Mr. John Blandon, his construction team, all the subcontractors that are involved, the design team, it was just a very sobering, incredible experience. My kids will go to this school, so again, that's kind of the extra cherry on top for me. But anyway, we faced a lot of adversity through this job, whether it be weather, COVID, just a lot of stuff, right? So, you know, it was just, it was a very great experience. We had, you know, we finished this job early. Matter of fact, it's really not even due contractually for about two more weeks, which, you know, with what we faced with two of the wettest, you know, years on record, then getting hit by COVID, it was a monumental task for us to overcome. So, anyway, I'd like to give this to Dr. Kane and the rest of the board on behalf of the community. Thank you.
First up is Glenn Becker.
I'm going to first start, but anybody who wants to record me, feel free to come on up. I believe in transparency, so feel free. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, we're livestreamed, so I mean, yeah.
That's fine, but they can look at my face because I have nothing to hide. All right, so I'm up here to talk about IT issues. My name's Glenn Becker. Hopefully you all know me. You've seen me for the last two years come up on and off. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start by giving you guys a timeline, so you can understand exactly what I'm going through. And then I'm going to expose you online. Here's how I'm going to expose you. Anybody here would like to see the emails that I received from this board? I've got them. Please, afterwards, after this meeting, come talk to me. I'll show you everything that I'm going to talk about here tonight. So let's start. 9/11/2020, I send an email to all of the board members, including the administration, "High probability of a breach of student data." I outline it clear as day. In October, I send another one, plain text emails, "Leaving the district with students' passwords." No response. November, December, same thing. 2021 comes around, July 15th, I stand up in front of all of you, said, "Neglect. You are neglecting your duties in protecting student data. Passwords, usernames, all of this data is being interchanged within your systems. It's leaving your network. High probability of a data breach." August 18th, I stand in front of you, I read your RUP. I quote it. I let you know that it says that you are holding parents responsible, but the school district is getting a pass. You have somebody in your administration who tries to discredit me during that meeting, reads, quotes the RUP, and says, "It's just about Chromebooks." I have a phone recording that occurred between me and that person with permission where that individual admits what they said during that board meeting was wrong. I was right. Not once have you recanted that statement since board meetings since then. Instead, you hide behind that lie, or whatever you want to call it. Then, on September 11th, the dozer comes. "I find that you have 681 students and administration information on the dark web. I provide you proof." Now, you're going to say to yourself, "Well, Glenn, that was 2021, right?" No. That occurred May 15th, 2019. That also occurred September 3rd, 2019. I provided you proof of all of it. Now, you'd think somebody would contact me, right? "Oh, my gosh, he gave us pictures. He gave us the information. He proved who was actually involved in this, including the administration." I did not get a response until 10:07. Now, there was an internal email that went out, though, and I have that from September 16th. You guys admitted that there was a breach. I was not included on that email. But on September 7th, you said there was no breach. Now, I got to hurry up. I only got four seconds left. So, let's get to, cut to the chase. I have evidence of a breach that has occurred in this district. You guys have done nothing about it. Now, the board can extend my time if you would like.
Yeah, if you could just wrap up real quick.
Okay, I'll wrap it up real quick. I've had parents contact me. Your lunch, I got billed for my kids on a lunchroom and a library book that they never did, occurred after this breach. My kid's information is out on the internet from this breach. You guys claim there was no breach, but I have an internal document right here that says there is, and you admit it. I've asked for evidence, and all I've gotten is quotes. You can't even prove the stuff that you claim you did. The law says every parent needs to be notified. Since 2019, it's still going on today, and I can prove it.
Thank you for your time. Next up is JJ Sofco.
My name is JJ Sofco, and I live in the Wentzville School District. Glenn, are you talking about Timberland's data breach or a different data breach? Today, I want to talk to you about item 14.2 on your board agenda. Policy 2770, Section A states, "The purpose of this policy is to promote safety and prevent harm to all students and personnel in the district." It also states that it is to promote retention of teachers and other personnel by addressing student behavior. These two items are exactly what we parents are seeking. Section F, "Parents have asked for some type of notification for all parents when an event happens at school that requires an evacuation of a classroom, classroom learning disrupted by another evacuating class entering their room, or lunchroom evacuations." This policy addresses the notification of the parents of the student that is having the behavioral issue, but does not mention any notification for the 25-plus student's parents whose child witnessed the violence or outburst. Section H, "This section speaks to any trauma reactions on the part of the student, other students, or school personnel. The policy acknowledges that the staff and other students could be traumatized by what they witnessed, but says nothing about how that trauma will be handled for the other students and staff." We are asking the board to expand this section. Parents have the right to be aware of the situations that have happened in their students' classrooms. Section I does not define retaliation, and based on the past conversations about Policy 1300, the school district only recognizes legal definition of retaliation, which is i.e. race, creed, sexual orientation. In the past several weeks, we, the parents, and the teachers have mentioned that the district has retaliated. And it's documented, you retaliate against teachers for speaking out by changing their teaching assignments or intimidation. This section offers teachers no protection. We are asking the board to expand this section of retaliation and protect our teachers. Deleted from this policy is staff training. Why is this deleted? And ask, is this language being moved to another policy? And if so, which policy? Also, if having one certified staff member trained is really enough for a school of more than 400 students, if moving to another policy... Does the Board of Education believe that having only one certified staff member formally trained in the proper and safe restraint of a child, one certified staff member trained for the building of more than 400 students is not enough at a minimum, and it all should, and it should be all staff in class or assigned with a student that has a history of violence? Don't delay the response time by limiting the number of staff who are trained. We ask you that you protect our teachers. If this is the wrong policy, we ask the BOE to make a motion tonight to create a new policy that will address these issues tonight. Let's make Wentzville safe for all students and staff. You know what's going on at Boon Trail Elementary that you've ignored for more than a year. You had to have a meeting with staff yesterday because you ignored it. Thank you.
All right, up next, Myra Wolf.
Imagine you're in a theater. The movie opens in China, where a mad scientist has developed a disease to unleash on the world. The first wave is deadly, but rather selective, targeting mainly the aged and unhealthy. The evil governments of the world use this as the perfect opportunity to control and enslave the masses. The main players, big government, big tech, big pharma, collaborate to come up with a quote-unquote "vaccine" they tout as the cure for the disease. Meanwhile, the big players, ordinary humans, are forced to isolate, wear masks, and eventually understand that they, the littles, will be the guinea pigs for the vaccine experiment. They soon realize it is ineffective and can result in disability or even death. Pretty sure you're all saying, "Don't take it. Don't take the vaccine," as by now, it's pretty clear what's going on. Back to the story. People resist, but the bigs have an agenda even more sinister and force mandates on the populace, even the children. The hero of this movie, who originally bought into the government narrative and happens to be Superintendent of the Year, comes to realize the people are right. The masks and quarantining don't work. The vaccine does not prevent infection or transmission and is actually more dangerous than the disease itself. And our children, our most vulnerable, must be protected. He immediately calls for an end to the insanity, stands up for the littles, and saves the world. Sadly, this movie is playing out right before our eyes in reality. Come on, man. Wake up. Set aside your personal gains and fears. Open your eyes, hearts, and minds, especially minds, and join us on the side of humanity.
Next up is Vanessa Hagadorn.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. I'm Vanessa Hagadorn, and I reside in the Wentzville School District. So here we are, one month later, after the last reading of pornographic and pedophilia books in our children's libraries, a month later. What is going on here, Wentzville School District? September 30th, there was a filed 6241 challenging these materials. These books that were read, The Bluest Eye and Lawn Boy, were appalling. These were pedophilia books, and they were in our ebook circulation. The Bluest Eye was even recommended on our APELA reading list. And our superintendent refused to recall paper books because apparently these books were checked out by students. This is already a blatant violation because Wentzville School District states in its own policy, "Remove first, review later." This also violated the Children's International Protection Act. As a former educator, I am deeply disturbed by this. Deeply. The board received many emails before and after the last meeting, yet they fell on deaf ears. Days passed, then a board member told us these books were removed. This turned out not to be the case. Days later, ebook libraries, we looked and the books were gone. So, we found out they reappeared in another, different school library. Why, why, why are us parents who just want to protect our children jumping through hoops to get this trash removed? How would you feel if your child, a minor, was reading these materials? I watched the last board meeting. I wasn't able to attend. However, I watched, and I watched people shift in their seats uncomfortable about the content. We're adults, and we're uncomfortable by this content? How do children, whose brains aren't even fully developed, feel reading this stuff when they have limited, hopefully, experience of any of this? And these books were adults performing sexual acts on children? Where is this okay? Nowhere. It's not okay. And if you all haven't figured out, the majority of people that are taxpayers are against this garbage, then you need to re-watch those last board meetings. This is absurd. And while this was going on, our board president lashed out at parents that show up here month after month calling us keyboard warriors. Who is hiding behind the keyboard now? I don't really see anyone in hiding. If these books were shown in Hollywood, our children wouldn't even be able to watch them. We are asking for you to please protect our children. These children live in a world where they are completely hit with sexual explicit images, social media, through each other. Please. And let's talk about academic performance. Half the kids are not proficient in math, 40% not proficient in reading or writing, and 43 are not proficient in science, according to Desi. These are not my stats, they're theirs. We, the parents in St. Charles County, are looking for board candidates. We need your help. If you are like-minded and you want to come and fight the fight with us, welcome. We will support you. We're tired of this. We want change, and we want it soon.
Next up is Corey Light.
My name's Corey Light. My daughter goes to Prairie View. We come here month after month, and yet you do not listen. You talk about community, and you talk about the students. We are the community. And the students, they are our children. What do we have to do? The community as a whole has chosen. Do we mandate it quarantines anywhere else? Are we putting masks on anyone else? In the stores? No. Because in this community, we have chosen not to do that. Why is this school district think they are above what the community has chosen? You were elected by us. You are supposed to be representing us. You don't get to put your will on us. That's not how this works. We have a saying in this state. This is the "show me" state, is it not? What have you shown us? That our kids are behind in school? That they have anxiety? That they're fearful to be here? Like, what good are you doing us? Please, listen to us. We have tried everything, and... You're derelict in your duties. If you don't listen to the community... We've asked numerous times. At this point, the problem in this community is the ones that are going against us. Quit fighting us. We know what is best for our children.
Last up tonight, Jen Olson.
Hello. My name is Jen Olson, and my son's a sophomore at Timberland. Tonight, I have two things I want to address. First is the COVID mitigation. Stop. You don't have the authority to quarantine, and you have no business contact tracing. These are draconian measures at this point. A friend of mine received a phone call from a nurse, asking if she had COVID. Since when do school nurses reach out to parents to inquire about their cold or flu status? The nurse got the information from a teacher who overheard a child talking about their mother not feeling well. The school has no business inquiring about the medical condition of a student's family member. This is beyond invasive and abusive. This district has taken things too far for far too long, and it's time to end this now. There is no science to support what you're doing. There is no precedent to validate what you're doing. Pandemics don't last for two years, and COVID's not going to be fixed with a shot. COVID can be successfully treated with therapeutics if the government would keep their politics and deep pockets out of our doctors' offices. Every penny of ESSER funds that this district accepts is nothing more than a monetary incentive to continue the COVID insanity measures that are destroying our children's lives day after day. The mask, the talks about shots, the quarantines, the testing, the overwhelming majority of this community demands that you stop all of this immediately. The second item I would like to address is Board Policy 0325, Student Representation to the Board of Education. We really don't need to invent the wheel here. Way back in the dinosaur days, I was roaming the halls of Timberland, and we had a student council. I was the Faculty Relations Commissioner, which put me in front of teachers, staff, and Board of Education members regularly to discuss student input on policy and issues within our specific buildings. If we wanted to address the board, we would have to notify the central office, and they'd put us on the agenda. I would like to suggest that the board amend the policy to allow for students to address the board in a dedicated time slot at every meeting if they so choose. Not just two hand-picked students, we have more than two schools. Let the requests be submitted to the student council at each high school and to the front office at the elementary and middle schools. This way, you guys can plan accordingly for the designated time slot. I would like to remind everyone that the parents are the customers. We choose where we live, we pay the taxes, we elect the board, and we decide which schools we want our children to attend. Yes, children should be able to address the board. Yes, children should be able to address the board when and if they need to, but they should not be contributing members to the board or of the board. You are all elected officials. It's unethical to have a student weighing in as a board member from behind that table. Whether they have an actual vote or not is irrelevant. They have not been elected by this community and it also is unreasonable and foolish to think that two students from one or two schools can possibly represent the interest or opinions of over 17,000 students across the district.
All right, next up we have Consent Agenda.
President Bates, on the consent agenda there on 1-1, approval of the consent agenda, it's just approval of the agenda, I do believe. And if we could move 13.4 to its general obligation refunding bonds up to prior, just that single item of old business prior to the superintendent's report would be appreciated. So if that amendment could be made.
All right, is there any objection to that? Yes, right before superintendent report. All right, we'll make that move. All right, with that, we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Excuse me.
Motion.
I had a couple of things I wanted clarification on, please. We could do that?
Yeah, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Did you have a couple of questions, Director Garber?
I do. So I was reading these on 11.6, the understanding of the central Methodist, and this would be the teachers, student teachers. As I was reading, I discovered, I read there that in the contract that students had to join the union, the NEA, or there was another reference to a union. So my question is, and this is a student teacher that we would be monitoring, and so who pays for the union dues? Does anyone know?
Director Garber, I don't know. We wouldn't be paying the union dues. If they're required to join a union, it would be through their university, it wouldn't be through us.
So I was just kind of wondering because obviously this is a Methodist university and obviously they don't have one. They don't have the unions, so they did put it in the contract. And I think that that was something more in reference to liability?
Yeah, so this is actually very typical-
If they don't have it, this would be our unions.
No, so this is a very typical practice. So what they require the students to do, and this is true of almost all community colleges and colleges, they require them to join as a student member and they do that online. They don't do that through us and they probably don't do it through the university. They do it through the website. My daughter had to do that as well. So when they do college experiences through student teaching or any kind of teaching clinicals, they have to join for the liability insurance.
Okay, and this is another one probably for you as well.
Okay.
The memorandum of understanding for the Hope Clinic Agreement. I did notice on there that there was, there was an address. 11.8, I think? Yeah. There was an address that I didn't quite recognize because that's not the corporate address, that's not the administrator's address. So I was just wondering, and it's on page, well, you were looking for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I think, so that's page 11, page 16, page 21, 26, and 31. And it just gives a name, but I think, and I've noticed this because to be contractually correct, should it not be the address of the administration? Okay.
Yes, it should likely in the future be the administration office. I wonder if they did not use the address for the school that they were servicing, but I can ask them to make that correction in the future as well.
If that's what it's supposed to be, is the administration address, I'm sure.
I would expect that would be best practice, yes.
I didn't see it in some other MOUs. Also, I have another, one more question too, that it looks like on 11, I think it's still 11.1, Giant Steps, and 11.12. Yeah. So it says that this contract starts on the 23rd of August. As I read the contract, it said it started on the 23rd of August of this year and that it ended on the 7/29/22. And I guess I'm just kind of concerned that we have this, it's already November, so would we not have had this? Should we not have had this in August?
Absolutely, that's a great question. Sometimes during our audits, we realize, sometimes we have many students at a particular placement. We audit ourselves each month to check and see which ones we may be missing. Or sometimes students are moved amongst placements as well. And I believe that this is one that our administrative staff found in the audit and asked them to go back and correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
If I could just for clarification here, possibly on Director Garber, where she did mention this about this, did you get a definition on that, joining a MSTA or NEA that you were satisfied? My question to Director Garber was, did she get a clear definition on that?
Even though I didn't indicate that this was a function of the university, this would, these were the student teachers, and even though that they, apparently, they do not join our unions, our teachers' unions here, but apparently they must join that online for the liability insurance that they would need while they are here being student teachers.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we good? All right. Any other questions? All right. Voting on the consent agenda, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, make sure you refresh. We've moved up general obligation refunding bonds to 12.1. And we have Steve Nicholas here first.
Mr. Andrevine, really quickly, we had a pretty good day when it comes to the calls, the bids themselves, and that information was actually emailed to the Board of Education. On your screen, you will see a summary of the bids, how the numbers in fact came in. Mr. Andrevine shared a number in terms of estimate on the past couple of board meetings, but you can see the numbers actually even more favorable than that. So I'll let Mr. Andrevine, Mr. Gaffory actually fill you in with more details.
Yes, at this point in time, we did have very favorable bids this morning. And today, we're requesting authorization from the board to direct the issuance, sale, and delivery of our 2021 general obligation refunding, 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 but, our 2021 general obligation refunding bonds, refunding bonds as presented. Well, I don't know why I'm having trouble saying that today. We are, I am asking Martin Gaffory, he is our bond consultant, to go over with us the bids that were received today. And also with us, we have Ally Rafferty, our bond counsel, to answer any questions regarding the bonds. So Martin, if you could go ahead and present the bids that we received this morning.
Sure, yeah. Good evening, everybody. Thanks, Rick. Just so everyone knows, Rick has really put in a lot of effort, as well as Susan, to really go through and put the district's best foot forward to explain to a brand-new rating agency too, which is Standard and Poor's, the district's credit rating. So went through a number of different iterations as far as presenting the information to the rating agency to explain the finances, the management, the structure altogether as far as the different policies and procedures. And the district was able to receive an underlying rating of AA- which is only three levels away from the highest that you could be, which is AAA. So that's an independent third party that reviews all of those various things and explains that that's, that underlying rating is very strong. The district was also a part of the direct deposit program, which carries a AA+ rating, and that's an intercept program. It essentially helps to secure the bonds in another fashion to make them a little bit more, more essentially safer since the bond funds essentially flow through the state prior to coming to the district. So that has a AA+ rating as well. So both of those in tandem help to lower the cost of borrowing for the district. So we ended up selling the bonds today, about $21 million worth of bonds. It was a refunding, so it's similar to a refinancing of a house. So essentially what we did is we lowered the rate from, from originally about a 3.7% interest rate to, you can see, here's the list of the various bids that were received. There were nine bids received. It's a very short issue. It only went out to 2025 for these new bonds. The old bonds went to 2026. So as you can see, the rate that was accepted is a 0.41% interest rate for essentially a three-year, just a little over three-year bond issue. That's a very, very low rate. From, from an investor's point of view, they're not earning a lot on their, on their money, but the district is able to actually borrow and refinance their debt at a very attractive interest rate. So we also were able to eliminate essentially one year of the debt service on those bonds too. The old bonds were due in 2026. These new bonds, we essentially accelerated the repayment, sped it up so that way we could cut off some of this debt. And the bonds are maturing in 2025, which is one full year early. District was able to receive about $3 million of cash flow savings over the course of the bonds. And since 2009, since we've been working with the district, we have helped to secure just about $27 million of cash flow savings for the district's benefit in lowering your interest expense through numerous refinancings and different, different ways to help essentially lower the cost of funds for the district. Happy to answer any questions. There's some, a little bit more information there in front of you, but glad to answer any questions if you have any.
President Bates, if I may-
Any questions? Yeah.
Just real quick, this is probably a question for Rick. On the next call date, what's the most recent call date we have on the other bonds?
I, I'm not sure what that date would be. I've been so interested in this call and getting this call taken care of. Martin, would you have that number there by chance?
I do. It's 2024 is the next for the lease certificates that are outstanding. And then otherwise it'd be 2025 would be, so the next handful of years.
Yeah, fair. My comment, then just a comment, this is fantastic.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, I'd like to, if I can, read the, the request for the board to make the motion. We request authorization from the board to direct the issuance, sale, and delivery of our 2021 general obligation refunding bonds as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next up Superintendent Report, Health Program Evaluation.
Yes, before we, and as the team is coming together, Ms. Casto, Ms. Parn, and Dr. Lebratt wanted to just provide an update to the community specifically, it's health-related and actually falls under the umbrella here. One of the reasons we don't have a COVID update is that we aren't looking to make changes in terms of what we're doing. We are not looking in fact to, there are districts that are having this in terms of a COVID update, it's because they have a mask mandate in some way, shape, or form that is in place and you are required every 30 days to have your board vote in favor or to the affirmative as it relates to the mask mandate. We're not talking about having that conversation. What we're doing right now is what we plan on continuing to do. Full disclosure, given what we experienced last year, we think on the backside of Thanksgiving, on the backside of Christmas and New Years, we are likely to see things trickle their way back up and they will normally roll their way back down. And so we're going to continue path in terms of what we've done this year. If we have buildings in which there are issues, we already have processes in place and we are able to, to, to make changes to our processes so we're able to keep school doors open. So I just want to go ahead and just level set and disclose that information, not only for the board, but for the community as a whole. And with that, Dr. Lebratt.
So I will provide the brief COVID update prior to the Health Services update. So COVID clearly impacts Health Services, but we wanted to focus, as we return to more typical school year, we wanted to refocus on what our typical Health Service update would be in our annual update. And as I said, it clearly impacts Health Services, so I was going to give a little precursor so that they could give their typical annual review. The report will focus on the overall goals and provide brief COVID update now. The St. Charles County Department of Public Health has recently issued an addition of a modified quarantine, which similarly matches what we are doing, so we're in alignment with that, so there'll be no change on our end from that perspective. We do have that modified quarantine in place unless a building hits 4%. If a building hits 4% like Prairie View recently has, we will, any of those St. Charles County modified or Wentzville modified quarantine students will have to quarantine at home instead of being able to mask and come to school for those 14 days due to that high positivity rate that has happened at Prairie View recently and had to be reinstituted through Thanksgiving break because we did peak back up and hit that 4% again. If a building does hit 5%, that's a time where we would implement masking. That was a successful implementation at Dwellow and we saw numbers decrease rapidly after that. Again, trying to identify peaks as they're coming, put quick mitigation measures in place, and then hope that we can peel those back off once those numbers begin to decline. We do have, I will say that Prairie View is looking really good right now in comparison to where we were looking in the last couple of weeks. And thank everyone for their work toward that. We are making some adjustments to the dashboard in coming days, just in transparency, always like to preview that prior to sharing that with the community. So on our dashboard, we will be amending the, for the most part, it's a 14-day overview, but on the positive staff and positive students, we will be amending that to 10. Initially, we had that at 14 days because we wanted to be consistent with the quarantines as well, but we felt it was important since we're counting those 10 days now, the positivity percentage in 10 days. And that indicates, you know, once you hit that 4% or that 5%, those are changes in the school. We wanted to make sure that we were really transparent with parents and so they were prepared if their building is seeing an increase. So we will change from 14 to 10 days on this positive staff and students. I will indicate that in the graph so that people are aware that that change is made. And additionally, we're looking to add the positivity percentage so that you don't have to do the calculations and try and guess the student enrollment. So you'll know as your building is creeping up. Just in case you are interested in what those current percentages are, we have a couple of buildings that are, that we're watching. Prairie View, Frontier, and Heritage Intermediate are at about 1.6 or 1.7, and Dwellow is at a 2.5%. So nothing super concerning, but just things that we're keeping our eye on and trying to make sure that parents are aware and in the loop as well. Again, no action until 4% once Prairie View rolls off after Thanksgiving. And then finally, one thing we are noticing, when we have buildings that are low positivity percentages, we're not seeing a significant amount of student-to-student transmission. But when we have buildings that have high percentages and we're talking close to 2% that threshold, sometimes 1.6, 1.7, as we've seen with Prairie View, Frontier, Heritage, we are seeing student transmission in those buildings at the 60 and 70% range. So 60 and 70% of the cases, once we hit the one and a half to 2%, 60 to 70% of those cases are likely transmitted from school because they've been in close contact in that school setting. So just trying to balance the best of both worlds and try to return as normally as possible while also really watching and implementing and putting in mitigation measures as carefully as possible so that we can continue moving forward. And thank you for the opportunity. And Laura Parn and Laurie Casto will give the annual report.
Okay. Sorry, we had to move out of the way of the camera there for a minute so that the audience could see you. Well, good evening. My name is Laura Parn. I am the Executive Director of Student Services and I have with me here our Director of Health Services- I have with me here um our Director of Health Services, Laurie Casto. We're pleased to be able to give you our annual um update and report of our Health Services Program and thanks for the opportunity to share tonight. Oh, I have to. Okay, so our department focuses on providing high quality healthcare when meeting an extensive range of students' health needs. Our nurses and Health Service aides focus on supporting students' health needs in a manner that also maximizes students' abilities to maintain their learning time. At this point of our program review, um, I feel like I would be remiss not to point out the tremendous job that our nurses and Health Service aides have provided um in their healthcare and their caring for students over the last year. So we want to thank them at the on, um, outset of our program here so that we can just recognize the hard work that our Health Services staff has put into caring for our district students. Um, on the screen, you see the five goals that we had in the last year. Through the incredible efforts of our nurses and HSAs, our department was able to meet each of these goals. But in the realm of Health Services, our goals are really ongoing. Our commitment to serving our students and meeting their medical needs is ongoing. So you'll see many of these goals and these themes continued in our proposed goals moving forward. As our purpose always remains on providing high quality healthcare for the students in our district. We have um indicators of success listed in greater detail in our program review, but we do have a summary of some of the indicators of success on the screen here. Um, ninety-four percent of the students who visited the clinic for a medical care were able to return to class healthy. Our Health Services staff did play an integral role in implementing mitigation strategies to stop the spread of COVID nineteen in our buildings. And measures were taken to improve operations for the overall effectiveness and efficiency of the role of Health Services. Um, we implemented a new Health Office Anywhere software last year that helped our nurses more efficiently care for students. We implemented three clinic spaces to separate um students who needed routine care from those who were demonstrating symptoms. And we implemented a nurse appointment system which allows our students to be seen in a more confidential setting um as the nurse um is able to meet their needs without having them wait outside of the classroom setting. So those are a few of the highlights. As I said, other indicators of success are um outlined in detail in our program review. Next, I have our Director of Health Services, Laurie Casto, who's going to share our goals, our proposed goals for moving forward. Do you want me to run this? Okay.
Thank you so much for allowing me to present the proposed, proposed goals for the twenty one twenty two school year. I will be sharing our three goals uh for moving forward this upcoming year as we remain focused on best serving students' needs. Our first proposed goal focuses on high quality healthcare. We aim to provide high quality healthcare to provide students, individual students and the school, school community. We aim, some ways we can achieve this is to include utilizing the clinic effectively for, for providing privacy and healthcare to all students and staff and continue to offer comprehensive services in the school setting such as Big Smiles and the Vision Van. And to provide the community with resources for families, students and staff as it relates to their healthcare needs. Our second goal focuses on effective staffing. We aim to ensure Health Services staff are best utilized to maximize positive impact on students' needs. We, some ways we can achieve this is by providing Health Services in the clinic by utilizing nurse appointments, self-care kits and self-care carts. Partnering with healthcare staffing agencies to cover Health Services absences and to increase our sub, substitute nurse pool. Our third goal focuses on a high quality professional development. We aim to provide current, ongoing, high quality professional development for Health Services staff. Some ways that we can achieve this is um, it's important for Health Services staff to have access to training of new and current guidelines along with best practices. This is provided by staff attending regional, state and local and national conferences. And by, um, so some of, some other things that we've figured out is that by providing a mentor to our new staff, it helps retain them and they have some connection into our group so they know who to go to to ask questions. So as Mrs. Parn previously mentioned, we have a lot to celebrate about the tremendous staff we have in our departments. Our Health Services staff have worked really hard the last eighteen months to keep our school community healthy. So I wanted to share our celebrations. As you can see on this slide, we had tremendous impact on a large number of students and staff through extra programming they worked to provide. I wanted to specifically point out that eight of our staff members were awarded Building Support Staff of the Year. We are so thankful for all the hard work that our Health Services staff have provided. Thank you so much. Do you, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I do. From my. So are you in a specific area for the clinic, you referenced clinic? But as I toured eleven or twelve of our schools, I always saw this is the nurse's office and whatnot. And I probably wouldn't have classified it as a clinic. This would have been nurse's office. Do you have a clinic location?
That's what we call our, that's what we call our nurse's offices is clinics, the nurse clinic. That's why we have always referred to them.
Okay. So I was, and so I guess I was unaware myself personally, because I don't have children in our school at this time. And I was um couldn't, um, surprised that you actually had dental care as a part of this. So are there dentists that come to the office?
Except there are dentists, yes.
Okay.
Um, so Big Smiles is a program that we provide for students who qualify. Um, and for that qualification, it's, it's a um free and reduced lunch. If they have insurance, they can also be seen in our clinics with a dentist. Um, but it's a mobile van that comes in. They have a whole setup. Um, they have X-ray machines. They have like the whole setup. They can do um cleanings, um small like cavity, like just fill cavities. They don't do anything major. Um, if they do have to do something major, they will uh give a referral to the parents um telling them where they can go to get that, that done.
So a child that comes to the dental, to the dental section, Big Smiles, do they have the, do they come attended with their parent or they come by themselves?
So they, parents have to fill out a form um that we send them and they have to sign for the student to be able to be seen.
And out of the entire student population, over seventeen thousand, we had three hundred and fifty students that participated in that? And then is that all year round?
We offer it, um, so we offer it, we try to offer it every six months in each building. Um, that way they get their two cleanings every year.
Thank you.
Other questions?
President Bates, if I may. Just a quick question on, you know, staffing when ratios was in here in terms of goals last year. Uh, as I understand it, this year was some struggle with some vacancies and filling roles. Could, could you just give a brief, uh, a brief just overview of where we stand now related to that?
So all of our pos- Yes.
Great.
So all of our positions are currently filled, so which we are very happy for as of November fifth, I think, is when everybody started. So um we've gone through training and a lot of them are still receiving training, but everything is filled.
Okay. Um, and this is not a question, it's more of a statement. I, I certainly acknowledge, you know, I walked a couple of buildings, you know, specifically Dwellow when they were going through their issues um a couple of months ago and and stepped into the nurse's office and met the nurse and recognized uh the effort she alone was having to put in as, as kids with just, you know, allergy issue. This was happening while she was also, you know, trying to deal with the list in the, in the county health department and that navigation. So, so certainly recognize the burden and, and the extra effort that's been done. And I think you have lots to celebrate, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that recognition.
Yes.
I do have one more question. So have you utilized the contract that we have for uh nurses when you need them? Have you utilized that contract?
For agency, yes, we have.
Okay.
We use them over summer school and we've also used them throughout this year so far.
Does that mean? Does that mean that um, are there any openings in the Wentzville School District for nurses?
Not currently, no.
Not currently. So we're utilizing the nurses' service?
Once everybody is trained, our agency, we will be, um, we will only use agencies to fill in when somebody is absent.
I see. Thank you.
We would add that we're always welcoming substitutes.
Yes, always.
We're always welcoming, yes, so send them our way.
All right. Well, thank you very much for everything you guys do. Next up is C SIP Action Steps Update.
So I think it was September, actually, was the last time the board was asking, how are we progressing as related to our Comprehensive School Improvement Plan? So on Friday, we provided an update. It's a forty-five page update of every action step embedded within our Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. What I did not sense is that the board wanted us to have um a slide per action step for uh this particular evening. So there's been ample time for anyone to review. If you have any questions about that, uh, that document, you're more than welcome to, to raise them. But what we want to do right now is just give you a brief overview of signs of progress and things that we have been able to actually accomplish um uh literally goal by goal. And I have to, I have to fully admit, when I think of where we were in two thousand and nineteen, July of twenty nineteen, when this thing launched, compared to where we are now, it's, it is amazing, especially with all that's been going on. What we have been able to absolutely accomplish, we still have work to do, but we've been able to accomplish as a school district uh with, with all the challenges, uh everything that was been thrown uh in our direction. So Brent, if you would. Again, the C SIP was approved on uh that date in May back in twenty nineteen. And on the bottom left of underneath the vision statement, you can see our value statements on the right side of the slide. But on the bottom left, that portrait of a WSD learner, which you also see on the strategic plan on the, the wall there, is really our holistic focus in terms of what we are trying to do to serve uh and meet the needs of students in the Wentzville School District. Uh, this continues to morph. It's a very um whole child centric endeavor that we're engaging in, but we continue to expand uh with different levels and layers of, of support and intervention to meet the needs of students. So when I think of the first goal area, again, you have a copy of everything uh that we've done, but we've been able to do quite, quite a bit. Everything from job shadowing with the Career Exploration Alliance to a CNA program. If you remember back in two thousand and nineteen, we were having conversation about hoping to get to a point in the place where we are a one-to-one initiative school district. We are in fact there. That's where we are, grades K through twelve. Doesn't mean that kindergarten, first, second grade students are having a device go home every single day. But if a need arises, and more specifically, if there is a need for uh the teacher to actually be using a one-to-one initiative in terms of ratio with students in the classroom, they have that ability. And that was something that we were dreaming of back in two thousand and nineteen and it's reality right now. Uh, we actually have added an intervention, or interventionist coach, intervention. Rick has passed on your uh, intervention coach. Uh, we've actually shifted our STEAM Olympics to a STEM a, a STEM Olympics to STEAM to include the arts as well. Um, our flexible learning cohort, whenever you're in schools, you're seeing more and more students in a more varied set of furniture, literally how we're going about um having students sit within the classroom space looks different now. And then in terms of data, we have both EduClimber and then our iReady Benchmark Assessments that are, that we are using. We know we were looking for some benchmark assessment data uh and systems for our high schools, but we have that for our K through middle school uh students. Um, under goal two, uh definitely a focus on security is what we're going to talk about as well as um some other components. We have an all-call system, a one-button radio, a system for suit, for our buildings. And then starting hopefully in the second semester, you're going to see us begin to deploy our Raptor system as people are entering the building. So we have a better idea of who is in our building. It's another layer of safety that we're going to be putting in place. In our, in our elementary buildings, we have our SSI, it's our school uh support interventionists. We've expanded the number of ESCs. We have reading interventionists. Um, and as it relates to what we're doing, we are a hub, a leader within the county for our parents' teachers' programming as well. So we've made a lot of progress. We still have work to do, both in Goals One and Goal Two um as well. And then last but certainly not least, our third goal, under finances, facilities and staffing, you just heard an update uh as related to what's going on in terms of, of capital outlay as we're looking at future debt, uh how we're able to actually take advantage of a favorable market and we're excited about that. This board well knows, we've done just a little bit when it comes to construction. We've at, we're currently adding on to two middle schools. We've renovated, renovated a kitchen at Wentzville Middle. We've opened a high school. We've opened a middle school. We've added a gymnasium at Holt High School. A Prop C has led to a hundred and five million dollars of construction proceeds. Prop S has led to forty-nine cents in terms of what's on the operating levy. Um, again, those are two like dreams. Those were hopes in two thousand and nineteen. We know what happened uh literally in April, again, in June of two thousand and twenty. And so we were able to be uh, uh successful as it relates to that. Uh, then we've also added a finance at a glance and a construction at a glance document to help our community um as a whole, understand what is going on, where we've seen growth, literally the millions of square feet that we have in the Wentzville School District. So that's a very, very high level, sixty thousand foot view of what's going on within the district. If there are specifics in terms of specific goal areas, we'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Questions?
Yeah, President Bates, if I may. Uh, Dr. King, how, how often have we, so this is two thousand and nineteen. I recognize we do the C SIP every five years. Can you maybe just explain the process and generally how we look at this, the action steps underneath the C SIP, how often it normally comes back? And just recognize I'm been on the board for six months, just trying to understand process.
And our cadence has readily, we first to admit, has readily been off. As a result of the pandemic, we paused a number of things. When I talk about us getting back to normal, one of the pieces that says we're getting back to normal is that we are more frequently reviewing um our efforts, our successes, our challenges, our spaces to grow when it comes to our Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. So we'll be doing this on an annual basis. We'll continue the program evaluation updates, much like the Health Program Evaluation update that you heard earlier today.
Okay. Can I further that? Please. So, so that's what I gathered and somewhat was rhetorical, but um, so I, I, I read, you know, the, the forty-page document or whatever that was with, with the goals and the action steps and the person responsible, the start date, um, and then the updates you've given as of today or, you know, as of last week. We've talked a lot about goals and measuring success and ensuring that the board as a collective body is thinking about that. Can, can answer a question, for example, how do I know the district is healthy? How do I know it's doing well in all aspects of our main three goals on our C SIP? And, and these are clear action steps that kind of put against hitting those three goals. What, what I think would help, and, and this is for me, and I'm, I'm, I'm actually maybe looking for board feedback uh from my peers, is that um, you know, just, just the, the action step, but what is, what is missing in my eyes when I'm reading the update against the action step is, is what is successful of that action step. It's an update we've, we've met it, we've done this, but there's no metric that's defined whether it's a percentage or um a dollar amount or a, a, a certain level of participation. And, and some of those things are hard to do, recognizing putting a dollar on every goal or action step is never going to be easy or a percentage or those things. But, but knowing if, you know, are we in the red, in the green or in the middle in terms of where that action step is? Is there something to bring to the board's attention that we need to focus on out of these action steps? I think in reading some of these, there are, there are some things that we are behind on, or we, we would like to be better on. It's hard to depict that in this document as well as even that, you know, general presentation, recognizing it's a high level. I think there's processes and then deliverables um a- as we've kind of talked about defining success that we could bring using this document that gives board feedback on what is the metric, what is the thing that we think is important against those action steps that we can then easily measure? And then using, one of your words, pivot towards showing the community how we think about um success. So, so i- i- it can be a dashboard view, red, yellow, green, we're doing well, we're doing not. And then on things that are red, things that are yellow, that kind of gives us a cadence as a board on what things are important on a certain month, a certain agenda, and maybe there's things that we just need to revisit on a, on a regular cadence. So bringing back that consistency, I do agree with. My feedback is, is there's some, there's some process in here we can do that not only helps drive board dialogue importance as well as how healthy we are, but helps the community understand that as well. Long-winded, but I'm looking for maybe some board feedback. We've talked about this in many ways. This to me really brought out, seeing this and reading this document brought out what I've, I've been trying to say for a little bit here.
Comments?
President Bates. Um, so Director Goodson-
President Bates. Um, so Director Goodson, I would go ahead and echo your comment, comments. I guess when I look at the document that included the action steps, I just looked at my board training, my state mandated board training, and it, it spells out what the CSIP is supposed to include, and that's evident base, that's evidence-based action steps, which you do say that you, you have some sources of, of research, but the board doesn't ever get, from what I, in my experience so far, we, we don't get to see the data and how it's helping students. So I would like to see that. It also says that we're supposed to have a list of the funding sources, so if we're adding a professional development, is, how are we funding that? Or if there's something that you would like to achieve or the board or us collectively, we would like to achieve, um, how are we gonna, how are we going to fund that goal? Um, so I think those are things that, that we definitely have to do. I know you have some reference to time, um, where we are, but I think to just make it clear and concise, put a column in there that says timeline, this is where we are right now, um, in this process, in the particular action step, uh, and that would help clarify those things. But I definitely think we need measures of success and in monitoring that progress, we need kind of a column, this is where we are, not just what we're doing, this is where we are on achieving our goal, we're halfway to our goal, we're seventy-five percent to our goal. But those are the things that I'm looking for. But again, definitely the funding stores, sources, um, the timelines for implementation and monitoring, evidence-based action steps and strategies, so the board can regular, regularly monitor, um, and view those outcomes of the CSIP, that's straight from the MSEP that you provided the board at a previous meeting. So that's what I would like to see because those are our statutory duties.
Other thoughts, comments?
You know, I would just say that as I was looking at it, you know, I, having been on the board for a little bit, remember, I'm like, oh yeah, we were doing some of these things. And so just the opportunity to get back into, um, picking some of these up where we left off, I think will be, will be really great.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other questions? Next up is old business. First up, we have three, thirteen point one, Wentzville Middle School Change Order Eight.
I make a motion to approve the Wentzville Middle School Change Order Eight as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, thirteen dot two, Timberland High School Change Order Two.
I make a motion to approve Timberland High School Change Order Two as presented.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thirteen dot three, South Middle School Change Order Eleven.
I make a motion to approve the South Middle School Change Order Eleven as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thirteen dot four, attendance incentive.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation for the attendance incentive as presented.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have additional discussion on this one?
Discussion, if I could, please.
Yes.
I, I guess my question is, is based on the survey that was sent out, I presume. However, I do not think that survey include that everything that was presented by the board are all suggestions. It is just a modified of what came to us originally. I do not feel also that, uh, maybe that this is not the time to drive our people to work. And I don't know, I have asked for, uh, some numbers of what are going back to eighteen nineteen and that of, uh, how many people would qualify this for this, uh, without the incentive, but at least we would have some numbers. And I don't know if we received that or not. I hadn't seen it as of this noon today. Therefore, um, I would like to see all options presented and, um, see what the feeling is there.
The, uh, the numbers that you had requested were the eighteen nineteen cost option. I did cost that out on option number one. Based on, uh, the seven hundred, five hundred, three hundred, two hundred thousand dollar option, at those who were sick in eighteen nineteen, you asked for the dollar amount that we would have paid out on that, that option at that particular time was five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. One thing to remember on that option i- is that, uh, those were the people who would have qualified without the incentive. Our hope is that with the incentive, more people, uh, would come to work and less, uh, would be sick, which would raise that amount. Uh, it's, it's only an estimate on how much that would be, but the number that you requested, uh, was put today in the, uh, in the, um, uh, the, uh, requests for questions and that answer was put there, but the answer is five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Question, if I may.
Yeah.
So, so just to make sure I clear that the motion is to approve what is being recommended here in the second part of this document. Okay.
So my question is, do, are you looking for a day now, or the recommendation is recommending a day later in the semester, the second semester? Is that something we'll revisit? Or are we looking to determine that at this time?
No, I think it, I think it would behoove, um, just for the sake of communication. And so that community has some idea of what that impact's going to look like, like what day would the board ultimately, uh, want to see? Like it's, or tell us, is it a day in February? Is it a day in April? Give us, uh, some direction there. But based off of the numbers themselves, um, as the memo suggests, the monetary, um, uh, incentive is actually, it was two to one over the financial incentive, uh, and I'm, I'm tired, I'm sorry. The monetary, the financial incentive is two to one over the day, uh, itself in terms of what our staff are looking for. And in terms of option one and option two, which we delineated the last time we were all together, um, you see our, it was tight, it was close. But you can see that of the seventeen, uh, hundred and twenty-three respondents, you can see where the majority of people landed. And that's why it's, that's reflected in, in the memo as well.
I, I would prefer to see it in April if I had to pick. Just, I, I think there's what map testing prep between January, March, April's a day or a month that has very limited days off. It's a tight month as I understand it, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Uh, so, yes, i- in terms of long runs, you, A- April would be the longest. February would be another opportunity. The board might want to, uh, entertain. It gets dark and gray and who knows what's going to be falling from the sky in, uh, in February, but, but when I think of the driest run, so to speak, it would be April.
Other thoughts, consensus, February versus April?
Or two days. Said differently, or both.
Yeah, my thought is we, we go with February and then, I know he doesn't prefer that, but we see how winter plays out and we can revisit this topic potentially.
I just want to publicly restate and I'll let you all talk after this. When it comes to the snow day decisions, they will not be impacted by what something will trip or not trip. That can't be a part of the decision-making. It has to be based off of the safety of everyone that's involved. So if that means makeup, that's what it means, but just throwing that out there.
Yeah, to me, we, look, you're making this decision, you don't, it doesn't change what you decide on a snow day. It is what it is and we run that risk, but I think it's, it's, it's a signal to our staff that we hear them, we see them, we talked about that before, which was my re- reference. Just before we make a decision on, on February or April, back to the dollars, um, question associated with that. We have, we have caveats that don't count, which was co- quarantine, uh, illness for COVID, FMLA, ADA. What about time that is already calendared? A prescribed surgery that was planned, a prescribed vacation that was planned. I know it doesn't include that in here, but those are planned things before we implemented this. You know, we're not going to obviously ask someone to roll back a planned surgery or a planned vacation time with their family. And then that automatically, you know, takes one of these bonuses, if not two, out of the, out of play.
Surgery would be F, under FMLA, so I think many of the things that you're talking about.
Depends on how long it is.
Well, FMLA is triggered after four days of absence, so there are very few, I would think surgeries that do not trigger an FMLA. So, um, we're trying to be cognizant of that and, and keep that in mind.
What's the risk of adding that language? I mean, maybe I'm asking the board that question. You've, you've prescribed planned time off. We can already cut the data if it's in the system for planned time off. I think part of this attendance, I recognize there's two issues we're solving for morale and, you know, issues with, with attendance and certainly late notification of attendance, scrambling to get, you know, um, substitutes, et cetera. So if there's something planned in time off, you already know that. We, we, we know that as a district, we know that as, um, a building administration. It, it seems odd to put this into, not include that in the bucket of exclusion for this math. That's just my gut.
May I respond, please?
Sure.
Um, the, the concern I would have about that is that opens us up for, I would say, that, that's what would open us up for discrimination and, um, picking certain people's sick days or certain people's personal days. The way that we have it spelled out was approved by our legal department and it is concrete, and it doesn't allow for that wiggle room of, well, I'm going to approve your personal days, but I'm not going to approve your personal days. Um, so it, it, it keeps it cleaner.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. We have February as a month, we're throwing out a day. Any objection to February? Mr. Schulte?
I'm not objecting. I just wanted to speak to the, the senior calendar again. Just keep in mind that, um, if, if we use all six snow days and then we give an additional day off in February, the seniors would need to add a day to their calendar to meet the, uh, state requirements for hours in attendance. So, um, just keep, keep that in mind as we go through this discussion.
Thank you for that note. All right.
Could we opt for the April? I thought that was something that you said earlier that was, I said, could we opt for the day of A, in April?
Like at a later date or say, are you saying in addition to February, or are you saying you would choose April versus February?
Well, I would choose April instead of February because otherwise there would be a penalty to the seniors.
Well, even if we, even if we choose April and we use six snow, yeah.
If it snows, it won't matter.
Well, they don't have to make those up. I thought you were talking about an extra day. I'm sorry. All right. Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve the recommendation for the attendance incentive, incentive as presented, utilizing a day in February for that mental health day. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? All right. Motion carries. Board of Education Buddy Schools. So we had discussed this item several months ago. Um, really just bringing this around again for the board so we can lay out what that expectation would be, um, and how we want to proceed in, in assigning those schools. Open that up to thoughts from the board.
What's the definition of a buddy? Like, what, I mean, I mean, I asked that clearly, I asked that flippantly, so I apologize. Like, wh- what does it entail? If you're, if you're designated as a buddy, wh- what does that mean? You're, you're invited to certain events, you get included in things, you're expected to do X, Y, Z. I, I don't think that's ever really been defined here.
That's what we're looking to do.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. And at the MSBA conference, I did talk to a few board members that, you know, have this in their district and, and they had it laid out. Like they're, you know, they attend one event, they, you know, whatever we decide we want to be that framework for that minimum requirement.
So I think I, I think I asked, we've been talking about this for some time, you know, so are we looking to decide today what that definition looks like? Or are we saying we agree to do it and someone will, someone we can designate will figure that out? I'm just looking, what are we actually trying to solve?
I think we're just looking to approve, approve it and then we can work out amongst ourselves, you know, what schools we're gonna, we don't have to sit here and debate that.
Uh, I'm, my, my view of this, I'm fine with it, you know, de- defining and splitting up the board in ways that make sure there's coverage of buildings. Uh, the only thing I will say is that, that is, I won't, I don't believe it should preclude board members from participating in activities, visiting schools throughout the district regardless of designation. I mean, I'm visiting Prairie View and Holt tomorrow and I, I don't, I wouldn't look at whether or not they're on my list.
Or if they're a front runner for a state championship.
Hey, go Holt. But, but that's, that's my point. I don't want, I'm fine with, because I do think there's a, there is a, I do feel like I, I've, I've been asking when I show up at buildings, like, if there's an event, you know, call me, you know, you got my cell, like I'll, I'll happily attend the event and just show a board face there.
What we're looking to, just make sure that all buildings are getting coverage.
I'm fine, and that's the reason I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure it doesn't preclude other board members who may do more.
Yeah. We don't need a motion.
I do think the question of expectation for buddy is, is a fair question.
Yeah, I asked it kind of.
And I understand that, framing all that out right now, but I do think that that's a fair part of this, this conversation.
President Bates, if I could, please. I guess my only question is, we're elected to a board as members at large to service the entire district. And, um, I think it should be just, uh, and that's what we should do if an opportunity comes and presents us and it's right to attend a certain school or a certain function or be invited, I think that's our obligation, uh, to, to the community, to our schools. But I, to, to designate that, uh, we're going to one school a- and that's our two schools or three, however we split it up, I guess it would be more than that, but, uh, I, I, I just, uh, I, I think our obligation is there to start with, basically is what I'm saying.
Any other discussion? So are we looking for a committee? Are we looking, looking to designate a, a, a few board members that, that want to lay this out? How do we want to proceed?
President Bates, I say if we move forward with this item, that we just assign the schools randomly. That way there's not a necessarily a prefer, or a preference for a board man, member being assigned to school.
I agree. All right.
President Bates, uh, it sounds like you've had some experience in your training that may glean, um, what the definition of a buddy is. I, I would recommend that you provide the board some views of that, that we can react to.
Okay. Thank you, Director Goodson.
If that works.
Yeah, that's fine.
I will, I will gladly help you with that.
That's fine. Thank you. All right. Are we good on this item? All right. So next up is challenge materials discussion. I believe in my absence, this was asked to be added, um, by Director Garber at the last meeting. Dr. King, do you want to just give a, a brief update on where we are? Cause I know that we did have some submissions, um, as it relates to challenge materials.
Uh, we actually have. Um, we actually pulled, uh, three titles off of ourselves. And I'm actually going to ask Dr. Skeeters to speak to where we stand in terms of, uh, the review process, uh, that's ongoing for two other titles. Um, and I also want Dr. Skeeters to speak to, um, I believe, I mentioned to the board that, uh, the Destiny System does allow for parents to, uh, be able to, um, flag certain titles so that if they have individual, uh, questions, they are able to safeguard, um, uh, and protect their students from even being able to have access to check certain books out. So, Dr. Skeeters, would you, uh, just speak to updates of both of those, please?
Certainly. Uh, so we currently have, uh,
Certainly, uh, so we currently have, uh, two, um, books that are formally challenged. Lawn Boy is one and the other is The Bluest Eye. We have a committee that is currently reviewing The Bluest Eye and will meet the Monday after Thanksgiving to discuss the book and then create a recommendation to bring to the board, that will come to the board in December for, um, you to review and to, um, determine if you will accept that recommendation. Uh, Lawn Boy will be reviewed after that. Um, as sometimes happens, when, um, books, uh, become challenged, uh, they become hard to obtain. So we are currently, um, waiting for copies of Lawn Boy to arrive so that our committee can review that. So, uh, currently that's the, that's the status of where we are. Um, we have, um, as Dr. Kane mentioned, um, a way for, um, books to be somewhat restricted in Destiny. So if there's a title that, um, a parent wishes their child not check out, that title can be flagged in Destiny. And then therefore, when the student, uh, would attempt to check that book out, um, it would pop up as that, um, is restricted for that student and then we would ask them to select another item.
Thank you, Dr. Skeeters. Dr. Garber, was there any other, I think this was an item that you had asked for discussion? Was there other discussion you'd like to have around that item?
This is an item that I would like to have on the agenda each and every month until we are settled with all of it. And, um, you mentioned, you mentioned two books. Okay, and you said, what now? It's, the last time I looked at this, I believe there was like six? Six or seven books?
No, we've received two challenges, two formal challenges.
I saw, I saw more.
Guys, not an opportunity to speak out.
I saw, I did see more. So the only thing I can ask you then is, and I will just get with you and then, because I know that there were more books than this.
So there were books that were questioned, but we, we've had, we've removed three titles. So we removed three titles automatically, the, the librarians opted to do that on their own.
What did you remove? What are the three?
Uh, All Boys Aren't Blue.
All Boys, okay.
Mm-hmm. Heavy. And Fun Home. So those three were removed. The two that are going through the process are The Bluest Eye and Lawn Boy.
So I, I'd have to look at the list myself to see exactly which ones they were, if they're not on there. Some of these I don't, I didn't recognize. So I'll, I, there is, there was a list that was provided.
Those were the, those were the five, those are the five that we received formal challenges on.
Okay, I thought there was at least one more, at least. Right, so, anyway, we'll get with you then on, on those numbers, on those titles, because, and, and I want to ask a question about the Destiny system. The fact of the matter that, I don't think, to be really honest with you as taxpayers, I don't think that the taxpayers of the Wentzville School District should be purchasing any of these kinds of books, period. I, I just don't think so, even though that you have, you know, you have a system that would say, okay, this child by this name cannot check out that book. I don't think we should have that on any, in any of our buildings and certainly not in any curriculum as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Can, can we, can I ask a question? Can we just cut to the chase? So the three books are gone, that's why you can't find them in discovery, they don't, they're searchable, they're not, they're gone because they're permanently banned. Um, then the two books that are in challenge process, I recognize the, the challenges with getting the books and therefore the committee's delayed, so we've been updated on a weekly basis as a board that that's ongoing and understand that. I think that the community has asked and has pointed to questions around whether or not the books are still able to be checked out. They're still there electronically and I, so I think there's, uh, as I understand it, so I don't want to put words in mouth, but the way I understand it is that they are there visible, but if a student went to check out the electronic version of that, it would air out and they would not be able to get that book. The reason for that, as I understand it, is because the committee hasn't decided and therefore deleting them from discovery, deleting their historical library references, the data that's inputted in there would be lost. And so until a decision is made, they will remain in there, so that data is there, is that fair?
All of that is correct.
Okay. Um, wha, if I may on something further that, I, I think there's certainly questions about how the books got here, you know, the, these are, and I think there was some statements at least made to the board, um, in, in an update that, you know, these are recommended by certain associations, they're bestsellers, you can look at, one of the books I think is from the seventies, if I remember right, or the fifties, I may be misstating, so it's been around a while. I, I think the question I've got and I think others are asking is, what, what if, what, what lessons have we learned here? Cause three books were immediately removed after being read by the librarian. So what lessons learned in terms of recommendations from these agencies? Are we now going to apply on a process going forward, if anything? Um, that, that's really my question, I think, i- is, is a general question in the community and that's all I'm trying to understand. We, we clearly had, we didn't, it didn't make it to a committee, it didn't make it to that regulation and was, was removed, uh, from there. So, so is there anything from a lessons learned perspective on process as we go and purchase books and, and, and the librarians do that, that we would pla, apply going forward?
So a couple of things, first of all, um, I think that to talk about lessons learned prior to the process being completed, um, I think we should go through the process first. Um, however, what I will say is that there's another process that takes place that you don't, don't usually see because it happens at the school level. So when there's a concern about a book that a student or a parent has, um, they can bring it, and often they do, to the librarian or to the, um, administrator in the building. And at that time, the librarian reviews the book and makes a determination using their, uh, resources and professional judgment, which is why we hire them, to either pull the book off the shelf, um, and to remove it from circulation or to leave it on the shelf. So that happens a lot. And that kind of thing happens where we saw like those three books that they, they acted to remove. So when those were brought to their attention, they have, they reviewed them and they made the determination that those would be out of, out of circulation. So the other two, those are books that we feel like would still be something that we would maybe want to keep in our library and we would like to take that through the process since they were formally challenged.
Hey, point of order, guys, we, we're not going to have interruptions, just let, let us do this dialogue so we can talk. Um, so, so the, the other question, so I read, I read the rag and it talks about, um, the difference between if it's a, if it's a physical copy, if it's an electronic version, how the committee is established? And, and I, and I think these two books specifically, we're setting up committee, can you speak to that process? Who gets on that, how that's done? And, and I think, and maybe help me, because I think there's a delineation whether or not it's in electronic version versus paperback.
So we actually updated that regulation when we started making use of lots of internet resources. So that's really more designated towards something like that or toward a video or something along those lines. Because this is actually a book that exists in both paper and ebook version, um, we treat it like a book. So that committee was formed, um, for like the challenge of a book.
Oh, no, go ahead.
President Bates, if I could, please? Um, first of all, I'd like to say I, I appreciate the opportunity that I've been given to sit on this review committee. However, I would like to say that we do need to clean up our regulation a little bit. Uh, first of all, if it's going to be so designated as school days, it shows, should so state in our, as school days, not fifteen days, not thirty days, if we're going to use school days. I think, uh, the timely manner of this process could have been a lot better and, uh, could have been shortened if we stayed by the policy as it is written. Second of all, I think it's important that these, uh, also a question is how the people were selected. Uh, they're supposed to be named by the president, submitted to the superintendent and it does, uh, four people at large, uh, and four parents of the district with two of each being selected. I think we have all parents sitting on this committee. Uh, I think we should look for people at large from the community and even if that would be clergy to sit on there, I think that's important also as we look at, uh, the character of these books. Uh, once again, I think you're, if we're going to go by this, uh, regulation that, uh, backs this policy, then we should follow it. If we're going to call them school days, then it should so be written in that regulation also, thank you.
I would like to add something. So I'm going to go back to basically what I said earlier and that, and you mentioned the fact that other people have, they have done reviews on the, on some of the books, especially if someone brings it to the attention of the librarians, okay? But if we don't have those books, we don't have to worry about it. And I don't think that, I, I think that there are other locations that, you know, if parents want their children to be able to read that, I think that it's not just limited to the schools. You can probably buy them anywhere. And I just don't believe that, I don't personally, I don't want to see my tax dollars buying a book that I wouldn't even allow, I wouldn't read myself. And I don't think, I don't believe that, I just don't believe that we should have that kind of a policy that we even have them here because apparently nobody looked at them before based on the policy you said that they had. And I, and I just, I, they, what purpose do they serve? I mean, is there an educational academic, uh, value to these books? No, there isn't. And I personally, I don't, I personally don't want them in the school at all. I don't want them online. Parents, if the parents want their children to read that, I'm sure you would let your children do it when you thought it was age appropriate, if you really wanted to do that. That's the choice of the parents, that's not ours, that is not our choice.
President Bates, um, Dr. Kane, I actually have a question for you. So you had stated that the program Destiny, it's, it gives the parents the ability to flag books that maybe they don't want their children to read. But what system is in place in the actual brick and mortar school library that may prevent, if they don't want their child having access to the book, how do they not pull it off the shelf and view, view the book then or read a portion of the book? If it's an electronic version, version and a print version in the library?
When I'm speaking of Destiny, I'm speaking to the checkout option. We fully hear and understand, um, the, the desire that there are some safeguards. Um, and I don't know what the magic number is in terms of the number of titles of, of, of what people are going to question, but we absolutely hear and understand that, um, the community and parents understanding that there are safeguards and there is a system that is in place that if you know there are three books, if they're in the library, I just don't want my kid to have access to them, that's the reason that we have Destiny. But we're talking, when I say that, we're talking paper and electronic in terms of blocking of, of access. So not just an electronic or ebook, but also a paper copy of a book, they won't be able to check it out. I'm just confirming that is correct.
But I guess what I'm, again, what I was trying to state is checking it out and accessing it, to me, are different. I, if a child can go in or a student can go into the library and view a book and pull it off the shelf that their parent doesn't approve from, but not check the book out, what systems are in place for that?
So with that being said, if there is a book that a parent decides they don't want their children to read, I would imagine that's going to be a handful of books in our library, I would hope. So could we not put that behind, uh, the desk and not make it to where it's available for everyone? And just, you know, if, if a student or a parent allows their children to read it, then they can check it out. But other than that, it stays behind the desk or remove it from the school altogether.
How do you draw that line, right? Like, I mean, I think with these books, there's, the issue is clear, right? But, but how do you draw that line, you know, whether it be violence or, or whatever is in the book that you're going to, that you're going to deem as safeguarding?
So, so can I, sorry, Dr. Kane, yeah, just if I may. I, I, I don't think we need to deliberate, my, my view. I, I, I think, you know, answers to questions, I, I made a point about lessons learned. So, so my, my view of an ask here, and it seems there's maybe consensus for the ask, is what lessons learned? So what processes are we going to put in place on a go-forward basis that helps mitigate this issue? There's clear need, clear desire, et cetera. So, so how do we just do that on a lessons learned basis, bring that back to us? To me, this is direction, I don't think we should deliberate, let the admin go back and do that because to me, there's guidance, they can, you know, President Bates, to your point, they can draw that line, they can come up with the concepts. I, I think there's clear majority here for something to improve and, and, and I'm interested in what that is and would like to see that come back to us. A- as just an ancillary request, uh, Dr. Skeeters, as it relates to the committees, who's on it? Could you just send that to us so we have the names of the people and the individuals, given Secretary Schaefer's points? I'd like to see that, thank you.
President Bates, I have one more question. Um, Dr. Skeeters, I don't know if you're the correct person to ask this, or to answer this question, but you said that for one of the books, I don't recall which, the, which book was under review, but it's hard to get right now, which book did you say that was?
Lawn Boy.
Okay, so if we have it, if we had it at one time on our electronic library, can we not, does the system not allow for the people who are on the committee to give access that way?
No, we only had, um, we have like, we have one license for that and when it's disabled through our, um, ebook vendor, it's completely disabled. So we would have to re-enable it to have it checked out, but we still wouldn't have enough copies for the committee. That's our, that's our issue.
Have we reached out to the county library to see if they have any copies since, since we're in the middle of a review? If they could help facilitate and give us access to the books for the members who need it on the committee?
No, I have not done that, I will do that.
Thank you.
Alright, any other, any other discussion on this before we move on?
I just would like to support Director Goodson's point that I, I, I support his, his proposal of, I, I would like to see something come back that problem solves, or at least attempts to problem solve, a better system to vet books that are in our school libraries.
And I don't want you to read resistance from administration on that, they're clear examples. Those three titles are clear examples of, like, we shouldn't have those, okay? But what happens when it becomes more subjective, when we're talking book, whatever the book number is down the road? That's the piece that we're trying to problem solve and think around. And so, um, I know we've got, uh, a review process that's underway for two books. We will absolutely run through that review process.
Dr. Kane, I guess what I was trying to say is, is I understand the points that you're making, but, but I do believe that we need to have it go through the process, but in the meantime, we can still, still be working on something and we don't have to wait for that end result, so.
I hear, I hear that point.
Alright, moving on. Alright, new business.
One quick one, if I could, please? I, I think some of this, I, I mean, I talked to, I didn't want to get a librarian involved that's currently working in the school district. However, I did talk to somebody who's retired. And this person, uh, basically, if a complaint came to within the library that she was responsible for, the book came off the shelf and that was it. She basically said, well, I guess I made a mistake here and she pulled the book for the person, you know, I, I mean, I mean, yes, I, and we heard this word process and I know we have a process, but in some senses, we do not follow it. And I, I think this is a timely manner issue that needs to be taken care of. You know, the decision, what's going to come out of this decision in this committee, uh, will be asking the board to support. And hopefully we'll have good reasons, uh, either to reject it or accept it, either way. But, uh, I, I think we, when it comes, we must address it when it comes to us.
I have another comment, please? Could someone please tell me what the value of these books are to our children? Could someone please tell me what the value of these books are to our children? Aren't we supposed to be educating and giving our students an education of value to them? I just, I just, I, I see no, I don't have porn books at my house, cause I don't want them. And again, the fact of the matter is, there's plenty of parents out here that this is their responsibility. If they want their children to read things like that, like Mr. Safko said, you can buy it on Amazon. I don't think that the taxpayers should spend one nickel on any books like that. All right.
I would actually like to hear an answer to Director Garber's question from someone on the administration.
So, so our librarians strive to provide a diverse set of books in the libraries.
She's trying to, she's trying to address the
Point of order, please.
The books that they select represent a diverse group of students. The four things that present the students who are here, the experiences they may have. Things that provide them opportunities to empathize with experiences others may have.
I make a motion to go to recess, please.
Second. All right, the board will take a five-minute recess for disruptive behavior.
I make a motion to approve the Board of Directors' election resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nay. Motion carries. All right, next up, 14 dot two, policy revisions.
I make a motion to approve the policy revisions as presented.
Second.
Amend the motion.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to for a separate vote on policy oh three two four. And policy seven two three zero to be voted on separate. With discussion. Oh, oh three two four and seven two three zero.
Give me one second, I lost internet.
And seven two, the name.
Did you get that Catherine? Okay. Any other discussion? All right, so we will be voting on the motion to approve the policy revisions as amended. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, we will move on to policy revision two seven seven oh, and then we'll loop back to the others to give Catherine a chance to make that change.
I make a motion to approve the policy revision as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, have discussion on this one? Was that just for a separate vote? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Did we get everybody? Motion carries.
President Bates, can you clarify what agenda item we are on, is it fourteen point?
Three.
Fourteen point three?
Okay, well, I didn't vote because I, I did a second, sorry, I didn't hear you call for discussion.
Oh, I said, yeah, I said, was there discussion? I said, and nobody responded, so I said, was that just for a separate vote?
Okay, so, I actually do have some questions about the policy.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So just to reiterate, we're talking about fourteen point three, policy revision twenty seven seventy.
Correct.
Okay. So, I have some questions, the first question is, I noticed there's some things that are stricken. The first is the definition of emergency situation. That is referenced later in the policy. Also, it talks about parental notification. I guess my question is, what, what does attempt mean? Dr. LeBrett, when they referenced, they will attempt to notify the parent.
Director Stulli, can you give me a page number specifically on the language of attempt to notify?
Sure, just one moment. It should be section F, the first paragraph. Okay, on attempt to notify the parent as soon as possible, but no later than one hour. That would be any communication mode that we could make via phone. Or sometimes even email, if that's a parent's preference. So, while we may not be able to make immediate contact with the parent, because they may not be available, may not answer their phone. We would do everything that we could to at least let them know that they needed to return a call.
Okay, and then, I had a question about section II, I. On staff's training, what was the reason for that to be deleted from the policy?
On II, staff training, so when we receive these, we receive them from M C E. Who suggest language for the revisions of policy. And on the revisions of the policy, this one, this particular one is, adoption is mandatory. And they suggest based on new state statutes and understandings of the legal issues. Just because they suggest the language of the policy and the trainings to be stricken, does not mean that we do not train our staff. We absolutely train our staff, our staff are required to understand what restraint, isolation, and seclusion are. And go review our policy each year, in addition, we have teams in each building who are qualified to do so.
Okay, I guess I'm seeking some. Peer input on those items, to me, I would like to see the emergency situation. That definition, I believe it needs to be included and not deleted. The same goes for the training. And then as far as the parental notification. I just feel that. The best interest of the student is, we can do better. And I, I know that we're attempting. But, I mean, what does that mean, one attempt during the day, two, multiple attempts during the day to attempt to notify the parent? So, I, I think that there's wiggle room to improve that situation. So, what I would like to see is administration make those adjustments. And bring it back to the board, but again, I'm, I'm looking for board feedback from peers.
May, may I clarify?
Sure.
Under item B, the, under definitions, authorized school personnel. When it, when it deleted the training specific to this policy. It, it included it in the definitions for authorized school personnel. So authorized schools, school personnel means personnel that have received annual trainings. In those specific professional development requirements. Those would be the people that would be available to assist with that. And then as far as the notification, per the policy, we would make every attempt to notify as soon as possible. But, we're obligated to notify no later than one hour after the close of the school day. So the policy actually requires us to not stop trying to notify the parents of any student we would be working with during the day. Just to clarify those points, sorry.
So, just to kind of confirm that I understand what you're saying. So, an attempt to notify will mean multiple attempts if need be?
Absolutely.
And, and then if it lands on the end of the day, can we do something to strengthen that language? Because that was just copied and pasted from the state statute requirements, from what I can see.
And that's, that's, that, that is the state requirement. And so, our obligation is to try to notify families as soon as possible, when we have a student in this type of situation. And so, while we try to do that as soon as possible. We are absolutely mandated per this policy by the end of the school day, or an hour after the end of the school day, to make contact with that family. So that's the, the legal requirement that we have. Ensuring that by the time the student gets home, that we've, we've made contact with them.
I understand that, but again, I, I would just really implore, I, I believe that while that's the state statute, the minimum. I believe that this is a local board, and we have local governance and more control. So, I think we can strengthen that, and maybe just say, I don't know, any and all. Attempts to contact, or again, just something to strengthen the verbiage. So there's, there's not any confusion about what it is we're trying to do.
Yeah, I think those are fair ads, from my perspective.
Do you have a specific language, I'm sorry, if I may, do you have a specific language that you would like that to look like?
I would just go back to my previous statement, but like I said, I think that we still, I mean, I'm not an attorney. It would be helpful to have in a, a school, or our legal representation at these meetings. It would also be very efficient, because then there could be some discussion and dialogue about that, rather than you guys coming back. So I think what we need to do is ask legal. And I kind of provided some guidance, Director Goodson, I don't know if you're able to help. But I mean, to, to me, it's just, just making that more clear statement. And I do stand by that the emergency situation, that, that needs to, to remain in the policy.
So, this is, this has been provided by our policy provider, M C E, which is run by attorneys. And so, the language that's presented here says that the district will attempt to notify the parents or legal guardians. As soon as possible, but no later than an hour after school. So, by saying as soon as possible, but no later than an hour after school. I get what you're saying, we want to notify, and we try to notify, and get a hold of a parent or emergency contact as soon as possible. This is saying just that, we need, as soon as possible. However, you have, you know, documented that the parent wants to communicate, whether it's email, phone call, text, whatever it is. We do that, but we're obligated by the, an hour after the end of the day, to confirm that the parent has received that communication.
And again, I, I'm not trying to go back and forth with you, I just feel very strongly with that. I just think any and every attempt, I think that's really important to add. These students are, I mean, I think they deserve that, I think we can do better. I think we have the ability to do better. And I understand the legal team put this together, but again, we, we, we do have some wiggle, wiggle room, in my opinion. And if, if they have a different opinion and checking with them, then by all means, I stand corrected. But I think it's worth checking that out and getting back with the board. And again, I think it would be helpful, just in general, on these matters, to have the, our attorney representation be here. For these discussions, we're dealing with a lot of, lot of issues.
So, this item, we, we did already vote on it, so we would need, I think we would probably need a motion. To have that reviewed or further reviewed by administration.
I'll make a motion to review. Policy two seven seven zero.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Mr. Schulte, did you have what you need, as far as direction on that one?
If I don't, I'll get a clarification from Director Stulli.
Next up is poly revision, policy revision zero three two four. Yeah, please refresh so that you can see the changes. Yeah, fourteen four is now policy revision zero three two four. Secretary Shaper, did you have questions on this one, or just wanted it for a separate vote?
Yeah, I would certainly agree, is this statute that puts this in here?
I did have a discussion with Ms. Hopkins about that, and she said that this was state law. I find that really hard to believe. But I too felt the same exact way that you did at that time.
I, I, I'd be fine approving as is, but I would like an answer to that, not just from Director Garber.
Can we get that and stay on board?
We'll, we'll do some homework, we'll provide an answer.
Okay. Any other discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. All right, next up, policy revision seven two three zero, Secretary Shaper?
Sorry, we're trying to get a couple of facilities name, I guess, and. All we did, we, we took the original policy and we, we struck out the facilities and made schools. And then wrote a whole new policy to have the name of facility. And I guess what I, what my concern is, it says, must present a resume and everything to the chief financial officer. And then the chief financial officer will inform the superintendent of the request, and superintendent will then provide a recommendation. If there's more than, my question is, is, if there's more than a presentation of, of naming of choices for this. Shouldn't it be the board that make the decision from all choices? And basically, the original says. The board may, when we're naming a facility or a school, says, shall that from a list of suggestions made by district students. And that's kind of been the practice in the naming of the buildings. Entertain requests to name facilities in honors of individuals. And we have did that on auditoriums, fields, and whatever. Or the board may create their own name for the school or the facility. I, I mean, I think we had a policy here. I, I do not think we need to expand this policy, no more than what it currently read. And it seems to me like it is taking some of the presentation away from the board, and naming these facilities for fields, auditoriums. And other service buildings to our district, so.
So I think this was part of the committee work, maybe, that you, Director Garber and Director Abbott were a part of? Mr. Schulte, can you elaborate on that?
That is correct, and Secretary Shaper, the, the paragraph you were referring to about the superintendent making a recommendation to the board president. The superintendent's responsibility in this would, would simply to be, to make a recommendation to the board president, to put this agenda item. On the, the, the board meeting agenda. Then, at the meeting, any, anyone that submitted a proposal. With the chief communications offer, officer with the, the resume and letters of reference or recommendation. All of those names would be presented to the board. The superintendent would not be deciding which recommendation would come to the board, they're just recommending that the item be placed on the agenda. For the board to make a decision based on all the information that's been turned in ahead of time.
Thank you for your definition.
You're welcome.
It, it, it seems to me, it's, this, this still leaves the authority of the decision solely with the Board of Education. And it, it seems to largely define a process for which we accumulate names from any place that may come from. Right? Am I?
All right, so we need a motion to approve the policy revision seventy two thirty as presented.
Motion, second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion. Motion carries. Policy four eight six seven, first reading. Mr. Schulte?
Yes, this is just brought to you for the first reading, if you have questions, feel free to send them my way. And then, I will add this to the December board meeting and ask for your approval, this is based on state statute.
Any questions or comments on this particular policy?
Just one question, I, I assume we've assessed all of our facilities for our abilities to meet this state statute?
We are in the process of, of doing just that, trying to figure out, based on the requirements are, where we may locate these rooms.
What are you talking about, that twenty seven seventy?
Alright, so we're going back up, so on fourteen dot four, we missed the motion, so we need a motion to approve policy zero three two four as presented.
Motion.
Second.
And then you wanted a roll call vote on that one? Alright. I believe that was four three, but we can do the roll call vote too.
Can I ask a question on that, since we're doing that? Was the ad, what was, what was caused by the ad, or what was the reason to add the bold language there?
Change in state statute.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you, John.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Abbott? Aye. Nay. Alright, fourteen dot seven, policy four three two two, second reading.
Yes, this policy is brought to you for the second reading, this is a mandatory policy adoption based on state statute. Then we would just ask for your approval, we already did notify the staff of this to stay compliant with state statute.
Alright, so we need a motion to approve policy four three two two as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, all of them favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Fourteen dot eight, policy zero three two five, third reading.
Yes, this policy is brought to you for the third time, and this was a policy that was requested that we develop on behalf of the Board of Education. And last time, we took action on it, and then it was voted to come back, so it, it's back to you for discussion and asking for your approval of this.
I would like to amend this motion and strike out, give me a minute. Strike out the sentence, the student representative will participate in board discussion, and add a minimum of two students.
Director, or Vice President Bryce, were you wanting to strike that whole last sentence?
No, just where it says, hold on, the student representative will participate in board discussion.
So you just want to strike that will participate in board discussion, so the, the sentence was read, the student representative will not have the right to make motions, vote, or hold board off, okay?
Correct, yes.
So we're just striking will participate in board discussion?
And then, adding in a, a minimum of two students will participate. And then, the rest of the board can figure this out in regulation, on how we want to work out the fine details.
Alright, so we have an amended motion?
President Bates, for, for clarification, if I could.
Can we, oh, we need a second, and then we can have discussion.
Okay, I'll second for discussion.
Alright, and then comment, Secretary Shaper?
My question is, is this the same amendment we voted on at the workshop? Is it exactly the same? And, and didn't this motion fail at that meeting? Do we need a reconsider this motion? A reconsider for this motion to come back to us? Or can we come back at a future meeting, such as this meeting, after it failed? Does reconsider come in play only at the current meeting?
I made a motion to discuss it again in the next meeting, which was this meeting. And it passed. Second.
Yeah, and, and then here, we're also amending this. You know, I think there was, you know, dialogue about amending it going in, but it is what it is, in terms of where it's at now. Johnny, you have a?
Just for my own clarity, so in the first paragraph, that's going to read, a minimum of two student representatives. And then in the last paragraph, I'm taking out part of the last sentence that reads, will participate in board discussions.
I believe that's correct.
And the word, you won't need the word but.
And the word but, yes.
Yes, I have that, thank you.
Alright.
So.
So could I ask?
Go ahead.
No, Director Garber, please.
So, you're saying a minimum of two students?
Yes, I, I would like to see more.
So what would be the maximum?
That's for us to decide in regulation, we can work out all those details when we set the regulation.
President Bates, if I may. Yeah, so, so my view on this, I obviously, you know, didn't pass the, the policy as written before, and I think I even offered, you know, my views last meeting, and so I won't rehash those. To me, the dropping of that language, the minimum, I like that ad, Dan, by the way, as well. Thereby puts the onus that the details, this, this policy now will read pretty ambiguous, but we're, we're signaling as a board that we want to hear from students in a different way, than, than we have today. And, and so this board, or this, this policy, to me, now allows us to do that in regulation three twenty five. So if we end up, we think we need, you know, a representation from each school, that that representation, you know, speaks during a allotted time in front of the board, or whatever that may be, that to me is the detail in the regulation, now the policy reads in a way that we're not putting this definition of a rep and what it does into a box. Because I feel like with the word board discussion, it's insinuated that they'll be involved in these discussions sitting at this table, and I don't feel this board was at that place. And so I think these revisions, to me, are acceptable. Allows then the administration to put work in the regulation, which will be driven from board feedback and the majority of the board, to get to someplace where we hear from students differently.
Alright.
So, so, they, if I hear this right, then this puts, they will come to us somewhere in the superintendent's report and give an opportunity to speak at that time?
That's all to be determined.
My, my words, Dirk, our Secretary Shaper, is, we can decide that. That, that's what this allows, I think the edit now doesn't imply anything, in terms of where it is, how long it is, how many students exactly it is, it provides a, a pretty broad brush that just says to me, the board would like to hear from students in a different way. We will decide that through regulation three twenty five.
Minus they won't be sitting up here with us.
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
Correct.
So they would be given a, a designated spot on the agenda to speak to us, though?
That'll be decided through regulations, as we discuss it. Any other questions? Alright. So we have a motion as amended, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. With that, we need a motion to adjourn, to, to close session for negotiations.
Uh, can I just add, just really quick? So, so we, we left in a recess, and there was a question, Dr. Skeeters, just specifically about those books, and, and I think it was just in haste in terms of coming back, and you were in the middle of answering that question. I do think it's fair that we answer, whatever, which way you were going to do that around, I think it was the educational value of the books, you know, being here, and just a general question that I think is appropriate to answer, if we may.
Sure, so, what I was saying was, we strive to put a variety of books into the libraries with, that demonstrate a diverse level experiences that the characters have, so that is how we go about selecting books that go in the libraries, we use a variety of tools to help us do that, including the School Library Journal, the American Association of School Libraries, we use awards to help us select books that are appropriate. And, so we, we strive to ultimately include books that will reach all of the students that we have in the Winston School District.
Thank you, Dr. Skeeters. Alright. We'll vote to adjourn, we'll take a five-minute recess before we return to close session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay? Meeting adjourned.